All right. I call to order the Gladstone City Council work session for September 26, 2017, 6:30 PM. Tonight, we begin with a few regular agenda items, which are the appointment to the Traffic Safety Commission, appointment to the Planning Commission, and to consider a wetland delineation request. We will then have a joint work session with the Commissions, Boards, and Committees to review the roles and responsibilities of these groups. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Milch?
Here.
Counselor Neef?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this past Saturday, the City Council and City Administrator had a retreat at Latest Motors, and I don't know if there's any latest staff here, but thank you, guys. This retreat was not about city business, but was instead us coming together and figuring out how we can work together. We discussed the issues and challenges we face, what our core values are, as well as the culture of our city staff and council moving forward. I want you all to know that we are 100% committed to the city, and we are 100% committed to each other. We are all on board in creating a culture that supports our city's needs and our vision. That doesn't mean that we will all agree all the time, but I can assure you that we will be collaborative, respectful, and engage the community in this process. I would like every one of you to help us keep on track, and I want to thank our citizens for allowing us the time to have this healthy discussion without being put under a microscope. Jackie?
Well, that was very good, Mayor. Thank you. In fact, how do you top that? I just want to say I'm very excited. I got to be involved with this training that we had on Saturday, and we collectively, as a group, want to improve how we communicate with the public and how we communicate with each other. And there's some takeaways from the training, and LB Day facilitated that for us Saturday. And some of those are how do we improve council meeting process? How do we identify disgruntled citizens and bring them in and work with them? How do we get them involved in productive ways? And how do we improve the Coffee with the Counselor Forum? So, at the October 10 council meeting, I will bring these back, and we will have the City Council formally acknowledge them, and I just want to thank you for letting me be part of that process. I think we have some really great projects that we're working on from a management team level, and having the City Council acknowledging that they want to improve what we're doing at the policy level is a very big step in the right direction.
So, any council want to make a comment?
I agree. I think it was a very productive meeting for all of us. We were able to vent some, figure out some disagreements, and agree to work forward to the better goal, which has always been, for me, getting a City Hall and Police Station built, and working on a library, working on a lot of changes that have occurred and continue to occur. So, the meeting was very good. I was very pleased with it, and I plan on continue to work to strive to do better on my own self, especially in light of the meeting, to work better together as a group, as a team.
And that's what we are, is a team pulling together and working together. And as Mayor Stimple said, we may not always agree, but we can agree to disagree, show respect for one another, show integrity, and listen better to all of you and hear your comments, and try to have a better understanding. And vice versa. You try to get to the bottom and find out how we really feel. And it's nothing against the city, it's pulling together.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to note that over this year, 2017, I'm not sure that we're all communicating like we wanted to, but I felt very good about the discussion that we had, and I feel everybody openly communicated. And I think it was a, one of the best sessions that I've been involved in with the council overall, since I've been involved in the councils.
As a new member to the council, I appreciated the opportunity to have this time to work together on this. And as someone who fairly recently was kind of watching the council work from where you are all seated, I recognize the importance of the need for improvement in the way we relate to one another, the way we engage citizens, and that the way that citizens who choose to be engaged work with us. We have high expectations and high hopes that the tone of the discourse that goes on in this room will be respectful and positive, and that citizens who may have an issue with something will come to us with solutions and ideas and help us to solve problems. And in particular, not only addressing us with respect, but especially the way we address city staff and fellow citizens. It's important that we are all committed to improving the way that we communicate with each other and relate to each other, because we agreed that relationships are the key to how we do city business. As much important as technique and the tasks, but how we relate to citizens plays an important role in what gets accomplished in our city.
Matt?
So, it was an eight-hour day plus, a little bit of time, and one of the things that struck me, I'd have to agree with Counselor Mercero, is that one of the things that struck me was that I think we would have been able to do another few more hours with another break, which I found, when I walked into the room, I thought it would be either a 30-minute meeting or an eight-hour-plus meeting. And I'm very happy that it turned out to be an eight-hour-plus meeting, because what it was, was it showed a commitment among the counselors and the mayor to put aside any kind of differences and actually work toward a common goal, and to unify, though not always agree, with regards to the policy process, but to unify going forward. And that unification on this council is going to be important, because it's also going to be important for us to unify the town going forward. As we look at all of our challenges, the city of Gladstone needs to be unified. We are all neighbors, we all live within a few miles of each other, and it was very heartening to me to have my colleagues sit down and all of us make that commitment and put aside any kind of issues to go forward to understand that the actual governing body of this city is, and the citizens of the city are the most important thing for that Saturday, at least in our conversations going forward. So, thank you.
So, moving forward, we have a lot of big projects that we need to work through, as Pat mentioned, Police Station, City Hall, Library, and if we weren't working together, if we continued to be fractured, things weren't going to come together like they should for you guys. And so, we did. We laid everything out on the table and said, hey, we're not always going to agree, as mentioned before, but we've all have to pull in the same direction. And so, that's what I'm committed to do, just like my colleagues up here are, and we need your support to be successful also.
All right. So, I'm going to reiterate some of the things that Counselor Milch said. As always, my goal is to keep this meeting respectful and gauging it on task, but to do this, we all need to work together. And I understand that a lot of you are frustrated and angry, because you don't feel that you're being heard and that nothing is being done. But I want to assure you that we are listening. We spent eight hours talking about that. We discussed ways to implement processes that will help to ensure accountability and to put in the checks and balances and transparency that you all want, and we want as well. And I want our council meetings to be productive, and the best way to do that is to keep it positive. And I'm not going to talk about holidays, because to me, that's always the positive thing. But, so if you want to spend your three minutes up here complaining, that's great, but come also with solutions. If you don't want to complain, that's great too, just come with solutions. That's the better option. So, let's just try that for a while and see if that's going to work. I think it will. I think we're going to walk away with a much better feeling about your city government and how the city can move forward. So, there's a couple people that feel that when I give the little council guidance in the beginning, it's a lecture, but I want you to know that's not my intent, that it's really for your benefit as well as ours. And I want everybody to understand our limitations, because that's very important. When we discuss and consider these matters, there are laws and rules that we have to follow. They start at the federal and state level and filter down to our city's comprehensive plans, city charter codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead, we have to follow these rules and take a path that's defensible. There are many times we have very strong personal feelings, one way or the other, but we really need to set those aside and limit ourselves to the framework our city documents provide. Thank you. All right. So, the first thing on our agenda is the appointment to the Traffic Safety Commission.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm glad that we're having this conversation this evening, because if you look at Items Number One, Two, they're related to Items Number Four, which comes later in the meeting, and that's to talk about the roles and responsibilities of the City Boards, Commissions, and Committees. I will admit to you tonight that there are errors made in how we did this process leading up to the Traffic Safety Commission and the Planning Commission, and there's one more pending for the Audit Committee. So, I would like to have a healthy conversation into what those errors are and some more clarification as to who can extend deadlines, when should we do interviews and such. So, in regards to Commission, Boards, Committees, Organizations, and Media, I think it's important for me to cite this before we go on with Number One, Appointment to Traffic Safety Committee. In the City Council Rules, Section R, Commission, Boards, Committees, Organizations, and Media, it says, under Number One A, Citizen Appointment and Removal, "When a vacancy occurs on city commissions, boards, and committees, the city will post notice of the vacancy and accept applications. After a review of the applications received, the Mayor and City Council will, by majority vote, appoint individuals to vacant positions." So, staff did this normal vacancy process with the Traffic Safety Commission, the Planning Commission, and the Audit Committee, because we had openings. We received one application for the Traffic Safety Commission, and that is in your packet tonight for you to consider. We also received one application for the Audit Committee. However, after talking to our accounting manager, Gray, when she had the deadline for that application, she said that she really was trying to have that opening through the end of the year, and she was trying to fill budget vacancies as well. So, we didn't put that in your packet tonight, but what I'm going to need is some direction from you on whether or not there's only one application for the Audit Committee. As we talk about extending deadlines and who has the authority to do that, I would like some guidance as to whether or not you want us to bring back the audit application at the next meeting, extend the deadline. And so, we have that conversation into the process and how we're filling these vacancies. So, that gets me to Item Number One. As I mentioned, there's one vacant term on the Traffic Safety Commission that expires at the end of this year. It was vacated by Kirk Stimple. So, we did our normal noticing requirement, and we did a staff report, and you have the application for Bill Osborn in your packet. And now, it's up to the City Council to have a conversation on if you want to appoint Mr. Osborn to that committee.
You have a furrowed brow there, Neil, which is dangerous.
So, I guess it's an unwritten policy decision that City Council made, I think, about three years ago or so, that applications would be, or the openings, I'm not sure, would be open for at least 30 days.
That's not a written policy, correct?
No. Correct. Well, obviously not. It didn't make it into the rules.
Right.
But, so, I guess the question is, how long was the opening for accepting applications?
August 22 was the deadline, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I don't have to...
So, was it open for a month?
It opened for 30 days.
I guess that's the question that I would...
I don't know. But first of all, that's what I'm saying. We don't know that it's a 30-day requirement. It's not a written policy.
Right.
You have new council members here, so we need clarity on what the process is going to be.
I remember that meeting, and I thought that it was to be a policy.
We did take a vote.
Yeah, I seem to recall that it was.
I believe it was back early part of 2013. Those are a couple of years ago.
I remember, because I'm the one that asked for that. That's why I remember it.
Because we had the same situation that we have now, where only one person, it was only open for a couple of weeks, and one person applied.
It was for Planning Commission.
For Planning Commission. And that person got appointed, and then discussion amongst us that we needed to at least leave it open for 30 days, so that it could get in the newsletter and any other publications, on the website. But apparently, you know, a former vote was taken, if I remember right, but apparently it wasn't formal enough to make it into the rules.
We have no written policy on the process. What I read to you just now is all we have.
Right. No, I understand that. I'm not questioning that at all.
Right.
Let me ask a question. What is the procedure, so if they were going to make a policy change going forward for that particular rule? What would be the procedure, Jackie, so that we have the citizens understanding exactly what the procedure would be?
Well, I think it's, and I don't know if you want to have that conversation tonight. I think what we need to do is we need to put together a written policy, and maybe we need to bring to you a suggestion that you can look at. To do that from scratch isn't really on the agenda. I think we all acknowledge that we need to have a written process on how you want to fill these policies, and maybe that comes later in Item Number Four, when we're talking about the roles and responsibilities.
That's understood, but I mean, we're talking, right now, we're actually on the dais, talking about potential of implementing that policy, that's a policy from 2013, where there was a vote taken but no record of the vote.
That's correct.
Okay. So, it was brought up in this conversation, that's why I'm asking, so...
I don't think it has any effect on tonight.
Right.
That's what you're asking.
Well, I don't know why it would be brought up at all, to be honest with you.
Well, as I was reading through Four, that's something that I comment on, is to, the process that we were going to use for making these appointments wasn't really mentioned. And I think that's something...
It's still gray, right?
Right. Well, and it's something that, you know, that has been somewhat discussed when we talked about, well, the appointments up here a couple of months ago, and then also to the planning, where we had separate interviews. The Library Board has, for years, had a separate process, where they interviewed candidates before they came to City Council, but the other Boards, Commissions, Committees didn't do that. And so, that's why I thought the process under Item Four was going to try to standardize that. Part of that looked like where we're, you know, instead of having five members at Library and nine members at the parks, that there's some standardization there.
Right.
So, when we get there, maybe that's the conversation we should have on probably premature.
Correct. I think we all recognize that we're trying to improve how we're doing it, but to have the history of what was talked about on how we do this not written is probably what's gotten us to this point. We all have good intentions, and I think that we need to have a process in place. Since I've been here, it's typically been people fill out an application, and once it comes to council, you guys choose, and we haven't done the separate committee piece, which we're going to talk about for Planning Commission. So, I guess, you know, you guys could defer from making the appointment to the Traffic Safety Committee tonight, if you wanted to try to work through that, or you could go ahead and make this appointment, and we could set the written policy going forth, almost towards this.
Well, my thought, or being that this is only a couple of months, I was going to move that we appoint Mr. Osborn to Traffic Safety. I mean, he expires at the end of the year, so that at least that's behind us. And then, he and others, if they so wish, can apply in December or November, depending on our timing, as to, you know, sometimes we've made appointments at the beginning of the year rather than at the end, and we can work out some of these other details in Item Four. That would be my recommendation. So, do you want me to make a motion?
So, you are the...
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I move that we appoint Bill Osborn to the Traffic Safety Commission to fill out the expired term until December 31, 2017.
I second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Mercero. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes. So, I have a question. So, then, Issue Number Two is then, when there was only one applicant for the Planning Commission, we then held it over and requested further applicants to apply, or opened it up and seeking further applicants.
Can we discuss that during Planning Commission? Or do you want to travel...
Well, the question is, why are we not doing it for this one? Why did we do it for one and not the other? That's my question. I don't have the answer. I'm not...
And I have a comment. I think now we have three broken processes. One for the Traffic Safety Committee, one for the Planning Commission, and the previous process for appointment to the City Council was broken as well. So, now we have three broken processes, and we haven't seemed to understand that we needed to get this clarified prior to both of these appointments. So, my question is, how integral, how important are these appointments right at this second? Because I'm afraid we're going to continue down this path with a broken process, and now that we've got three different processes basically in play, what are we looking for now? Fourth process? I think we can do better than this. That's just my comment. I mean, I'm still willing...
So, would we like to hold this and not make these appointments?
It's not my call. I'm on a council with six other members.
No, I just want, we're having a discussion. Would you consider that?
Well, to answer Counselor McMahon's question, which maybe with another question that I'd asked earlier, as to how long the, did we have the opening for applications for traffic safety versus planning? Were they the same?
Ms. Bannick, what was the original deadline for both?
I believe both were the 22nd, and I'm reviewing that now, and I believe both were extended, not just Planning Commission.
So, when did you post them? Was it two weeks or three?
It was probably two weeks. I'm looking right now, so I can tell you for sure.
So, they were both extended?
They were both extended, correct.
Okay. So, there you go.
So...
Well, the process needs to be fixed. We need to refine it. That's a given.
I would prefer to see us go ahead and make at least the appointment to the Traffic Safety Commission tonight, per Neil's motion. We had, the Mayor appointed a task force that included some citizens and staff and council members to work on City Council rules. They met in the early part of 2017. They presented a report to the council in April of 2017. It was not, the report has not yet been adopted, but we've worked on it together, and I assume that will be coming before the council at some point in the future. I don't remember exactly the date, if you have it on the agenda yet.
Right. So, we had interim period of down to five after the recall. We were waiting for the two new ones to come on. Tonight, we're having our first full work session on the roles of the Committees, Commissions, and Boards, and that was to bring them both back when ready for adoption, to amend the City Council rules and the Boards and Commissions. We're coming up to the end of our volunteer year, and my desire would be that when we're ready to launch in November for our empty vacancies, that we have a formalized written policy in place. It's really, I don't think it's critical to what these committees are going to accomplish by the end of the year and whether or not you make these appointments, and I say that respectfully. I'm more concerned about cleaning up the process for the new year coming in.
And I share Counselor Tracy's concern about cleaning up the processes, and I think that in the absence of a clear process, we kind of played it by ear, but we got more applications and, you know, we conducted and, you know, we did something, we did a process, and have, are in the position to be able to appoint people tonight. But I agree that formalizing something that maybe people understood was to be a process before would help us in the future, and give guidance to staff, so that you wouldn't need to check with anybody if you had openings and we kept them open for a certain period and didn't have enough applications, or, you know, however we decided to do it.
Okay. But in light of the fact that both of these were extended, so that kind of takes one argument off the table. Do we want to have further discussion? We have a motion. And second, do we want to take a vote?
Sure.
All right. Motion was made to appoint Bill Osborn to Traffic Safety Committee. Do you want to do a roll call vote, or do we want to do just a yea or nay vote? We'll do a roll, we'll just do a yea or nay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Bill Osborn. All right. Next item is Appointment to the Planning Commission.
I also will need clarity then, as we talk through whether it's in Item Four on the Audit Committee vacancy and Budget Committee vacancies. My suggestion would be, since you don't have the application before you tonight, that we talk about if you want that to be advertised for a longer period of time and come back to you once those processes get into place.
So, we're going to make the Audit Committee like number, make that three, and then move the wetland delineation to four? So, we have it as a separate discussion?
Well, I don't have an application for you to look at tonight. I just want you to know, we did receive one.
Okay.
We did not extend the deadline. We need to bring that to you for consideration. We can do that at the next meeting, or we could leave it open for a longer period of time. Again, these are the processes that we need to flesh out.
Okay.
Because as you go into the next item, we had a joint work session where the City Council and the Planning Commission collectively decided that they wanted to create a committee to review and interview the applications for the Planning Commission. So, again, if you go back to what the current council rules are, basically, if you're interested in Planning Commission, you apply for that position, and then it's put in the council packet, and you guys vote, much like you just did. With this process, there were two elected officials, there were two planning commissioners, and there were two residents that served on the committee. The original deadline, which we now know was not 30-day notice, was two-week notice. We received one application for the Planning Commission position. I told the Mayor and I told Chairperson Roulette, we received one application for the Planning Commission meeting. Do you want to extend the deadline? I said, I got yes from both of them. Let's extend the deadline and see if we can get more people to apply. So, that is what happened. We extended the deadline. We received two more applications, so we had three. We set up the interviews. We met with the committee who sat up on the dais, who received copies of the applications at the time of the interviews, and they also got to contribute to what questions were asked toward the Planning Commission. All of you have been afforded a copy of the DVD, because we did record it, and it's also on the city's website, so anybody in the room could watch the interviews. As you noticed in your packet, out of the three, two only showed up for the interviews, and the Planning Commission Committee agreed at that time that they... and the Planning Commission Committee agreed at that time that they would only consider the two, and that was Candace Carlson and Bill Preble. So the interviews were held, and also the deliberations were held on the video, and the group recommended that Bill Preble fill the vacant position. And just to be clear, I called both Bill and Candace, and told them that this was a recommendation only by the committee, and that tonight the city council would either consider to accept the recommendation, or they could refer back to council rules and do a majority vote.
Discussion?
The one part of communication, of which I will take responsibility on my part, I received an email from Ms. Betts regarding extending the deadline. And I looked at it, and I said, okay, and carry on. What I didn't realize, that in listening to Jackie's comments, that how was it made publicly accessed to, so that everybody had a fair chance to in fact be, to know there was an open application still? And the, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jackie, it was noted to the website that in fact it was extended. So the only question is, did everybody get a chance to in fact look at the website because they knew it was extended? And could there be unfair bias or whatever by whoever in that case? And I'm not sure I can answer that. I wish I would have asked a couple more questions, I may have come up with the same response that I said earlier, but that's a communication question, that maybe that would be questioned in Item 4.
Probably.
And we can talk about that further.
I'd like to say something, it had been stated, and Jackie asked if we wanted it to be an open, and I apologize, Ms. Betts, our city administrator, asked if we wanted it to be opened or closed. I was one of the ones that voted to have it closed, and the reason being is, and I want to compliment all of you this evening, there's been no talking, no whispering, and that was the reason I asked for it to be closed. When you bring applicants in, you're nervous, you're not quite sure what questions are going to be asked, the focus they have to put on listening, and when we have issues going on in the back of the house, you don't realize how it carries forward. And my reasoning for that was to protect the applicants. And Mr. Preble and Ms. Carlson, both, you could tell were nervous, and they have to really focus on what's being asked, and how they're going to give their answers. So I'm asking you not to be so critical when we vote no sometimes, and there's a reason behind it, and it's not to cut anyone out, or to say that it's not, you know, that we don't want you to know. But I wanted to share with you my reasoning for voting no, to have the room closed.
Okay, I think we should be happy, we have people that want to volunteer on our committees and commissions, we just need to figure out what's the right process for getting them there.
I don't see continuity process, that's where I'm, that's why I'm having some grief up here, I don't see continuity process, I hear that the deadline was extended, I don't hear numbers of days, I don't hear numbers of days that are continuous, or that are, will line up in continuity with the other process. So I'm kind of, I'm not really understanding exactly how we're carrying through this process. Just because it was, the deadline was extended, was it extended two weeks, was it extended three days, was it extended three hours? And were they both the same? Because that tells me that we actually have something close to a process, but if we didn't extend it the same amount of days, if one was a day longer, a day shorter, or what have you, we're starting to lose continuity process, and I'm concerned about that. It's really hard to talk to our citizens about being open, transparent, et cetera, et cetera, if we don't actually have a process in place, so I'm just, I'm kind of perplexed here.
How long were they extended, Tammy?
Both were extended to September 5th, both of them.
So how many days?
August 22nd.
Was the first?
So the same extension?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And my understanding is we really, we only have two applications that we're considering.
For the Planning Commission?
For the Planning Commission, that's correct, okay.
Let me get some clarification on that, the thing you read earlier, you said that people could apply, and then you also said that the council makes appointments. Nowhere does it state that the appointments we make have to be chosen from among the people who apply, that we could have the equivalent of a write-in vote, we have 12,000 citizens who potentially we could choose to appoint if we wanted to.
That's correct.
What we've typically done, though, is look at applicants, people who have shown an interest, who in this case took the time to come for an interview, and prepare an application and all the rest, and my view is, we should, you know, be consistent about that kind of a process, but I don't think that we are committed to choosing from only among the two who were interviewed, but when we take our vote, we'll decide how we feel about that.
Well, my understanding is Len Nelson actually withdrew his application.
I was getting to that in my summary, yes, that today he came in and withdrew his application, so he doesn't want to be considered in that process. So yes, and the other question, quite frankly, when do you want to do interviews, and when do you not, and so there is a lot of this that needs to be fleshed out, so...
We've had a policy with one board, as Councilor Reisner mentioned, the Library Board was the one that had within its own bylaws, involvement of that board in interviews of potential members. I think as we get to looking at our, the roles and responsibilities of the boards and commissions, we might want to see if we want to have more consistency on that, whether we want one group to have different rules than the others, or we'd like to adopt similar rules for all the boards on a variety of matters. And the second thing is that for the Planning Commission, the question was raised about why extend one and not the other, when we thought maybe only one of them had been extended? And back in around, back in the early 1970s, the state of Oregon adopted some rules that affect who can be and who cannot be on a planning commission for a city, and we had to adopt a resolution as a city back then, changing some of our rules, and changing our code that added some provisions that make clear certain qualifications, preferences given for people in certain kinds of careers, limitations on people of similar, of other types of careers, and because of that, I think that limits the total number of potential applicants that you have. You can't have people, for example, that work in real estate on your planning commission, you give a preference for people who have some background in the area of building and planning, and some of those related kinds of fields, so that you have some expertise. It's a pretty difficult technical job for citizens to do, and the state recognized that was important, and we embodied it in our code. So I think because of that reason, that is one justification for making sure that we give as many people as possible the opportunity to apply for those positions.
Any further discussion? Okay, would someone like to make a motion, or decide to hold it over, what would you guys like to do?
I would like to move that we take a roll call vote on the candidates who were interviewed for the Planning Commission position.
So does that mean that you are not accepting the committee's recommendation? Is that, would I understand that motion to mean, that you want to do an individual council vote instead of accepting the committee's recommendation?
Well, I didn't put it that way.
Those are the choices.
If my preference for a candidate happens to coincide, and I will say now it does, I could make it that vote, that motion. And I guess since we had some people that felt, you know, that disrespected the process by not doing that, I'll change my motion. I move that we accept with gratitude the work of the interview committee, and approve the appointment of Bill Preble to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Councilor Milch and seconded by Councilor McMahon, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm going to need to recuse from the vote, so I won't be making a vote.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
I would like to say, there are a lot of different, we didn't, also the, when we did the Planning Commission thing, we didn't really talk about why we're choosing the people we choose, so I think it's important to say that. We had two very qualified candidates, we looked at, those of you who've seen the interviews, we looked at that knowledge of the kind of technical matters that are involved in being a planning commissioner. One of our candidates was very strong in having some work experience and coincided with those areas, one was very strong in having a recent education that coincided with those areas, so we kind of had to choose between those. There are a lot of other things we could have looked at, the relative time that someone has lived in this city, their familiarity, you know, with the business district of this city, because that's something the Planning Commission has a lot to do with, there are lots of criteria that could be involved, but I think that the Planning Commission, or that the interview committee and the questions they asked, help us to really settle on which candidate was the stronger of the two for the criteria that they valued, and I'm willing to support that.
All right, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill Preble's on Planning Commission, welcome. All right, next item is to consider wetland delineation request for the Olson Wetlands. Staff?
Oh, I was going to say, thanks for everybody for applying, and also just keep in mind, in the next few months, we're going to have openings on all the committees.
Yeah, with no process.
Well, no, we'll have a process worked out.
Yeah, we will, all right.
Thank you for being patient.
And we will ask for all of your help with the process.
We are trying to make it better, we really are, and I think the first step is acknowledging it and talking about it in an open session, so the next item before you tonight is, was brought to me by the mayor, she provided me a proposal from Cascade Environmental Group to conduct a wetlands delineation on the Olson Wetlands project site in Gladstone, Oregon. It is in your packet, attached as Exhibit A. Also in your packet tonight are letters from Britta Burdette, Brian Early, and Stephen Worsley with the Abernathy Group, as to why they would like the city to consider having a wetlands delineation done at this time. Public Works Director Jim Wynott and I contacted Steve Dew with Conservation Techniques, he's the one that did our Parks Master Plan, he didn't find any reason why the city should make that a priority at this time, that's consistent with the way the Public Works Director and I also felt if we were going ready to do site development plans, of course we would trigger a wetland delineation on the city's portion of that. However, staff's recommendation is only a recommendation, so this is being brought before you tonight for you to consider. The proposal was prepared for Tammy Stimple of Black Mountain Consulting, and if this is something that we are going to pursue, I want to make sure that we are following our public contracting rules set forth in Resolution 902, and specifically I outlined what the process would be. So if the city council tonight makes a decision that they want to have a wetland delineation done on that property, I also wanted you to know that it's not something that we have budgeted for, and that it would need to come out of the Parks Improvement Fund line item. And I also would like the city council to recognize that if we have it done for this wetland, there are two other wetlands also in our parks inventory, that I would just be cognizant that we may have to be consistent, Salty Acres and Glen Echo. So with that, you have the information in your packet there, and Jim Wynott, Public Works Director, or I will answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question, has the Parks Board taken a position on this?
Yes.
They support, okay, thank you.
And this proposal was strictly for information only, and a scope, it wasn't to get, hire the company, even though the company has worked for the city, and they're actually doing the Doll Beach Project, Boardman Creek Watershed, and I think they were involved with Renirston as well.
They were initially, yep.
Yeah. Any discussion on this one, questions, concerns?
I think I would just have to give way to what Public Works, public staff, and city administrator, and not spend the money on something that could change in five years, we've got plenty going on right now, so I don't see a need to add this all on. And I'd be, I guess I'm a little curious, what does this do to, does this put us, the city, in any kind of a position in regards to the proposed development that is potentially still going to go in at the adjoining, the apartment complex that was?
Funding property.
And I think this protects us, because it delineates our part of it.
Yeah, I think it's, the result of that hearing, and that process, was that the applicant's going to have to go back if he wants to propose something else, and do a wetland delineation, I mean, I think that's pretty much a given at this point, based on how the code reads, so that's going to be somebody's responsibility, I mean, it would be the applicant's responsibility at that point, if there was an application done, I mean, not to say that it would be redundant, but...
No, because he's only going to delineate the part that's on his property, it wouldn't be the rest of the Olson Wetlands.
The entire, the entire wetland.
Yeah, it would just be that one piece.
So this would be a little more holistic, you know, I don't think it puts you in any, it certainly doesn't put you in any worse spot relative to that application, I don't know that it makes much of a difference either, though, because if I recall, the code language that would apply to this, there may be a duty to investigate beyond just that border, so...
Okay, thank you.
Well, I disagree, I think that we need to do this, we need, we have these assets in our community that have not been logged or delineated, and it's just a bad development ready to happen. It's going to be easy to encroach on these if we don't have the documents in place to protect them. We flood every time that we get heavy rain, and it's because our wetlands are not working. We need to delineate them so that we can get people's, organizations' help to fix them, and make them work properly.
As Aston mentioned, the Parks Board did discuss this, and are in support, because there's organizations and groups out there that are willing to help us, once this information is determined, and... And so though it's, what, $5,000 something dollars upfront, there's the opportunity for us to receive more than that in the future. And, you know, being a bean counter, that's something that I did think about as reading through this, and I support this.
I support what the staff has come up with, in that we just approved a master plan, of which I don't believe this was in there at this time. And my comment last meeting, I believe, was that if we do this, which I think is probably needed at some time, then we should write something else off the slate to take its place. And providing we did that, I don't have a problem with it.
I'd probably get money to do it.
But I wanna see something else gone. Since we just approved it.
Right. Well, I disagree in regards to... I think it is mentioned in the master plan about this wetland and the others.
We haven't approved the master plan.
As to what we can, you know, and we just approved that earlier this month, of the opportunities that we have in the wetlands, maybe a boardwalk and some other things.
Okay, so the wetland was in the plan this year to spend the money on?
So... Well, no, what I'm saying is...
Okay, so it's no...
Well, I thought that's what... My apologies.
I said it wasn't in the budget for this year. It was in the plan to talk about wetlands.
Correct. My apologies, I misunderstood what you said.
Okay, Michael.
I misunderstood what you said.
I think we do have budget... Money budgeted in the budget this year for projects related to our parks. The reason I asked a question of the position that the Park Board took on this was because back in 1995, we adopted a resolution which added this responsibility to the Park Board, which is to act in an advisory capacity to the city council regarding ongoing monitoring and evaluation of the care and protection of wetlands in the city of Gladstone. So we look to our Parks Board to advise us on this, and I want to accept their recommendation. And since we have budgeted for some projects and can take the funding of this out of that budget, I don't think we're... I don't think this is an issue with what we've done in a master plan. And I agree with... And also, there's the potential value to kind of settle two issues here. One is the viability of doing something with this park that we have, that we own as a city, by delineating and understanding what, you know, maybe putting it a boardwalk or something like that, which was part of the master plan projection for the future. But also, it'll help us settle the question about the adjacent land and have us... No one answer sooner or later. I think we're seeing... We seem to be assuming we know what the delineation is going to show. We made a decision as a council on a land use matter based on what somebody at the state level said they suspected. Now is a chance for us to either back that decision up or back off of it based on facts. And I would rather work on facts than just a projection. And so I would favor doing the delineation.
Anybody else?
I would support that if, providing it comes out of the budget someplace, okay? Then I have got no problem with the delineation report.
We did put extra money in the budget for the parks. What was it, $50,000?
$50,000.
$50,000. So we did add an additional $50,000 that wasn't earmarked for a specific project.
If it comes out of that, then I don't have a problem.
Yeah, that's where it would come. And we may still be able to get other groups to help fund it, so it wouldn't come out 100%.
And we have more... Have Jim Wynott come up?
I was gonna be able to hide back there.
Not quite.
Jim, give us your reasons for not wanting this.
Quite honestly, I think we can get the developer next door to pay for it as a condition.
And it won't come out of our parks and records?
Right. I mean, that's an option. I mean, that would be something the Planning Commission could request on them, so...
Yep.
And the contractors still work for us, but be paid for. I mean, it's how you word it and stuff. So that would be my preference.
Okay.
This wasn't to... This was just to give us a price, so that we had an idea, because there was, you know, $10,000, $15,000, and nobody knew how much this was really gonna cost.
Right. And we do have some other things coming up in the parks. I mean, we got a... I just got a quote for doing our SDCs, and that's gonna be kinda pricey. We're gonna need to take that out of that money. So I mean, there's... We can do this, and the plan I had was, let's see if we can get the developer to pay for it.
Absolutely.
We're gonna have to do some, make them do the whole thing.
Be creative on how we get these things paid for.
So that was my thought.
And you were saying something, too?
No, I said, for us, it's the timing. We don't question whether one needs to be done. What we're saying right now, it doesn't. If the developer wants to develop that property to make it conditioned, that's what the consultant and staff was coming to in regards to the timing of when you do the wetland delineation.
Well, that makes sense if we can add it as a condition.
Sounds good to me, too.
Yeah, probably something that he, she, whoever ends up developing, assuming it's the same person, would have to do before they apply. Because they're gonna have to... If I recall correctly, the code is very dense, so forgive me, but they're... It basically talks about it being within a certain distance from the subject property and then having to do some additional analysis. So I think as part of... I think that would be done on the front end, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. So what do we need to do ahead of time to make sure that that's part of the deal for him?
Well, typically, if they're coming back, they're gonna need to do a pre-app.
Okay, not through the county?
And then that's when staff, and ran by the county, puts on those expectations.
Okay, well, we had a disconnect with the county for this application to begin with, so how do we ensure that that is a part of it?
Well, we did meet with them a long, long time ago and gave them those conditions, but we were looking at the utilities, and we were looking at roads and all that other stuff. And this was not a big red flag at the time. It is now.
It is now. So what do we have to put in place to make sure that this does not get missed?
I think tonight, if you wanted to make a motion that you recognize that to have a wetland delineation is a priority on the Olson property, and that you want to make that a condition to the developer when he re-appeals for that development, to have something of that on the record, am I correct, David?
Yeah, I think the only thing I hesitate is just to make sure we have the legal authority under the code to do it. And so I think we do, but again, it's been, you know... I'd wanna just confirm that. Assuming we do, absolutely, I think that's appropriate.
And that's the process that our staff is going to verify we can do that.
Okay. Does someone wanna make a motion, or we wanna discuss this further?
I move that what Ms. Betts just said. In regards to this delineation on the Olson Wetlands project tied to...
Condition of approval.
...provision of approval.
Somebody wanna make a second?
I'll second that.
Well, it looks like he's contemplating. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no, but it's passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Yes, you did.
That's great information, thank you.
But it was good, it helped me.
All right. So our regular agenda items are over at 7:30 PM. We're going to start the joint work session, but I wanna give everyone an opportunity to take a quick break, because we don't know how long this next piece is gonna take. So why don't we come back in five minutes? That's all right? Yeah. Just baby gavel. All right. At 7:38, sorry, I gave a couple extra minutes. We're reconvening for the joint work session with the commissions, boards, and committees to review the roles and responsibilities of the city boards, commissions, and committees. Staff?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a work session, and what you see here is three members of the subcommittee that started reviewing the roles and responsibilities of the city boards, commissions, and committees. We also have Councilor Neese and Councilor McMahon that were on our subcommittee. I did not give you this tonight. I gave it to Councilor Milch and Councilor Tracy, and this was what we had back in July 2016, and it was a copy of all the current committee chapters for the library, the Parks Board. The library has all these bylaws, ordinances, resolutions, and it's all convoluted. And as far as what I can research, the discussion on this started in early 2016, late 2015 in regards to, we really need to review the roles of our volunteers and streamline what the expectations are and what the process is. So we have a really good theme tonight, where we're trying to clean up our process. We don't expect to get to a resolution this evening. Tonight is really about saying, okay, this is all the work that the subcommittee has done. As you can see, we met in February, March, twice, April, September. And then again, we had that break where we had lost two members of our council. We wanted to make sure we were back up to seven. New administrator. So we regrouped, we went back through the changes that we had made, and we're bringing it to you tonight to have a conversation and to kinda highlight some of the themes and the changes that were made in here, and to talk about, are we on the mark? Are we headed in the right direction? Because our goal really would be, by the end of this year, to get these adopted so that as we start our new volunteer year, that we have this new process in place, as well with the city council rules. So with that, I'm gonna let Jim or Colin talk a little bit more about the process that went into and what we standardized in the packet.
Can I ask a question before we get going? Was there any citizens involved with the subcommittee?
No, but...
There was with ours.
There was with yours.
I thought that was one of the stipulations when we put these together.
No, with our committee, the citizens involved were going to be having committee members provide input at a work session or work sessions. That's what our group decided, instead of having just one or two citizens on the subcommittee, that we were... We wanted input from all the volunteers that were on these committees. And I think we're probably gonna get some of that input tonight.
Okay, so you haven't had that up until now?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just been us as a subcommittee.
That's how we... That's how it was outlined, Neil. That's how we did it.
Yeah, we did it different.
I thought they were supposed to both been the same with public... You know, being that these commissions, committees were... Are made up of volunteer citizens, that we would have a citizen or two on the committee helping with...
That's what this is for.
Okay.
This is the beginning of that process.
Gotcha.
So all of you that are sitting way in the back, that's not allowed. You guys need to come up and participate.
You don't have anything?
Oh, is that what you did? Okay. Just because you sit back there doesn't mean you're out of...
Yeah, okay. So just to... Just to carry forward then, we looked at the city of Milwaukee, Oregon City, City of Tuauton, and West Lynn. That was all done back in 2016. And at that time, the consensus of the council was that they really liked the way City of Milwaukee set up their structure and standardized what their roles and committees were. So we took the Budget Committee, the Senior Center Advisory Committee, the Library Advisory Board, Park and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning Commission, Traffic Safety Advisory Board, and the Audit Committee. Those are the committees that we're reviewing. The intent was to streamline the roles and responsibilities so that we had consistency. And in the staff report, the changes that we highlighted was that our intent was to remove the bylaws from individual committees and instead have a standardized City of Gladstone Advisory Board, Commissions, and Committees guidelines for member conduct. So that is in your packet, and you'll see Exhibit 1. You have Page 44 through 46, 48, 49. Those would be the overarching...
You can talk.
You have Advisory Committee and Advisory Board.
Right. And we'll need to go through and make all of those changes. We expect this to be marked up. So what we did is we removed that. We put language in each committee section that the committee would prepare an annual work plan to be discussed with and approved by the city council in a joint work session by the end of the third quarter, which would be September. Each committee shall report on its activities in a work session to the city council at least annually. And unless otherwise specified, all boards, commissions, and committees will consist of seven members. So that those members that have more right now, we would grandfather them in until their term expired, and they just not fill those positions until we're just back at seven. So that's where we are this evening. And yes, to be clear, in this proposal here, we did remove the language in regards to the library board not interviewing applicants. So we have that open for discussion. It's not in any of the committee's roles or responsibilities as we're proposing. So Jim, anything else? High-level, Colin?
I just wanna add, so that is for your information, I didn't review and revise the proposed changes for the Senior Senator Advisory Board. We all took other departments, so that, you know, it wasn't Lauren Gunderson interim library director making the changes to, you know, the new changes to Hal, and the same with myself. So we all took different stuff, so just wanna put that out there, so the council is aware.
Right.
I would just like to add, one of the things, this kinda got started, I don't know, maybe three, six months after I started or whatever, and I... What I found when I first got here, it was very confusing. I could not even understand the differences between all the boards. I mean, they were just all over... Everybody had their own... Well, look at that packet over there. Everybody had their own rules, and they were all different and copped together over the years. And it really made it difficult for staff, quite honestly, to... I don't wanna say manage, but to work with the boards and these commissions. It was just... Because you didn't know what the rules were. They were different for this one and that one. And so part of this was to be more consistent, you know, and look at what other cities have done. And what is proposed here is, we started with the city of Milwaukee. A lot of the other ones were similar. It's just theirs was the most concise and just short, short and sweet, let's say. And so that's kinda how we got here. And I kinda volunteered beyond this because I, at that time, was on two of the boards and committees, and it was... It was a challenge. It was difficult. So the consistency between all of them, I mean, another one of the things I noticed when somebody would become a member on this thing, it was confusing. It was... It wasn't... It just wasn't... There wasn't a guide that's up front here, like, you know, welcome to the board, here's your roles and responsibilities, here's all that stuff. It was just, you're on, and it's, what do you do? And there was some frustration from some of the new members as well. And so that's, I guess, a long story about why I got involved and wanted to be part of this.
So one additional comment that I would also make on Page 4.6, where it says, under Board Commission and Committee Appointments, Section C says, you know, "In order to become more familiar with the applicant's qualifications, the council may interview all applicants for a vacancy." What I would suggest is that if we're going to identify a written process, that it would come underneath this section of the code. And so whether or not that's where we're spelling out how long you want a vacancy to be advertised, who has the authority to extend an application deadline, that's where I think that we can make the additions and have that process spelled out here, so that you can amend it as needed and to get some clarity on that. Councilor Neese or McMahon, did we miss any high-level... Counselor Neese or McMahon, did we miss any high-level themes that you can recall?
No, I think the biggest thing was, like we've talked about already, was that we were trying to clarify, simplify. I was the one that looked at the libraries. They had amendments and they had, they had three or four different types of issues that the council had voted on over 40 years. I think one of the first ones that was in there was from 1978, and Wade Byers was not there at the time. But anything from the 80s on, there was, and I'm, what's the correct term? Because there was amendments and there was-
Resolutions.
Resolutions. And it was very difficult to read them and figure out which one superseded the next one. Because does a resolution supersede the amendment that's 10 years older? And that's where this really cleaned up a lot of that because it was very difficult to read and understand.
And you're right, that's true.
It's just understanding that in the library category, there's two things that are governed by the State of Oregon Library, whatever rules. I think one is, I'm trying to remember, there were like two of them, that are different than anything else that are mandated by the state.
One was term limits?
Term limits, and I think the other one was-
And it was the board, wasn't it?
The number of people on the board, I believe, is one of the things.
But also the interviewing process, that it's mandated by the state of Oregon. Now, if that's not true, that's fine. But I think we better verify that. Excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, we appreciate it. That's why we want you all here.
And we really felt that it was important that we get consistency with the number of people that are on each one because we had such a different number on different committees. And we thought if we could stay consistent, that would make it equal for all of them.
And the perfect example would be in the Senior Center Advisory Board.
Correct.
You had one amendment or provision, whatever, saying nine members, another one saying seven members, and another one saying five members, but two from the council, you know, it's, there's just too much difference.
Some were voting and some weren't.
So we just need to, like Counselor McMahon said, just simplify it, really, across the board.
Yeah, one of the biggest inconsistencies I saw was the role of counselors on these commissions. Some were members, some were members without a vote, you know, some had more than one. And again, I think if we reach a consistent approach, we may need to better define the role of a council liaison if ultimately what we decide is that council members serve only in a liaison capacity and that citizens are the ones who essentially function as the committee. But I think, again, what you've done to achieve consistency here is going to do exactly what Counselor McMahon says, is simplify things. You can talk in general about something rather having to refer to years of different resolutions and bylaws and so on.
So I'm going to make a note to make sure with ORS 357, Library Advisory Board, that we have the statutory language in that committee that Natalie just referred to on that. So I will make a note to check that. For the Library Advisory Board, it would be ORS 357-400. I will check that statute requirement. And yes, interesting enough, as you talk about council liaison, they're not intended to be a voting member. They're intended to provide support to that committee. And I think that that actually was removed from the title of this role of council liaison, city committees, boards, commissions, because we found no role or responsibility for the council liaison and that that should be fleshed out, too. And I think it's important that we value our volunteers. And like Jim said, we want to have productive meetings. And so having the annual work plan for each committee, making sure there's staff support, talking about who sets the agenda, because I think in different committees, chairpeople thought they were supposed to set the agenda. But actually identifying how all of that should be done just provides us the level of consistency. To provide annual reports to you, I think from the committee members is valuable information so you know what they met on throughout the year. And also to have a work plan. And we have, the Parks Board, I think, is instrumental in helping Jim when we get to the budget process on what types of projects they would want to have input on and advisory role to us. So chairperson and vice-chairperson. Another one is, you know, you're required to attend the meetings. And sometimes we have issues with volunteers who get on committees and they don't attend. And then also establishing open meeting law training in regards to having our annual volunteer appreciation and also combining that with cake and ethics laws. It's just the thing that we need to establish and continue to move forward. So. Any other thoughts? Are we headed in the right direction?
One question I had was, you're talking about the agendas, that we're- I would like to see us have actual agendas for each of the meetings and have those posted online so that the public knows what these different boards are discussing.
They are.
They are? They are? Okay.
Yes.
That's probably one of the biggest things I'm asked. And then do we keep minutes for the meetings?
Yes. In fact, I will say, and I commend Ms. Bannock, because this past year, we have cleaned up our process. You could go to our website and tap on any committee meeting and have the audio. It has the agenda, it has the minutes.
Perfect.
So we have been very consistent with that, yes.
Well, I'm sorry for bringing it up then. I guess I haven't done my due diligence. Sorry. But thank you. Awesome. That's exactly what we need.
It has helped, meeting in here versus downstairs, for getting the minutes together. I know some members of our boards aren't the happiest with that, but I think in the long run, it's been advantageous. So, Mr.- I mean, I-
Yeah, you know, the stuff is online. I watched all the interviews for the Planning Commission online. I read the packet twice. And we have an amazing amount of stuff on that website. It's great. And one thing I did notice was, you know, there's a counter on there and I was surprised that it wasn't being utilized as much as it should be. But it's got an amazing amount of stuff on there. I've watched all the city council meetings, all the interviews. I've watched some of the Planning Commission meetings two or three times.
Randy, Randy, Randy.
I'm a junkie from Gladstone.
Our meetings are now on, the videos of the meetings are on YouTube. And if you have Comcast Xfinity X1 format, they've just added YouTube as an app you can use. So you can watch city council meetings at home on your big screen TV in the comfort of your living room.
Going to need intervention.
With popcorn.
Mindy?
There's a question about your, the 210050 meetings under P. Does the open meeting laws state that we should have an, every agenda that gives public opportunity to comment on any matter regarding law jurisdiction? Is that part of open meeting laws? Or could something like that be added so that every meeting must have public comment at every meeting? In right, in right?
I don't think it's required that you have public comment at every meeting. I think in general, we do that. But it's certainly something that you could add if you wanted to do that.
I think it's important. Mindy needs to sit up front.
Do we want to talk a little bit about a process for the application process? I'm hearing clearly, is it the consensus that you all want a 30-day notice period?
Yes. I think it's very important.
Something consistent.
And you want a public notice constitute website newsletter? We don't pay to put it into the clock in this review.
We have in the past, correct.
So there's three ways of our noticing. So we have the website newsletter and we could do social media.
Posting at the senior center, posting at the library.
We could put some general information in regards to it being posted in public places in the city. But for me, the newsletter, website, and paid in the local paper, is that constitute a public notice for all of you?
Yeah.
Okay. 30 days noticing. Who has the authorization to extend a deadline of an application?
I do not want that authority. I want to share that with other people.
I like the way you indicated that you contacted the current chair of the committee and I guess you did the mayor, who just said she didn't want to be part of this. But I would be happy with that as a procedure.
Yeah, I would say that you're going to have to have some more folks involved in that.
When you say the governing body, do you mean the council? Or do you mean the committee which is seeking a vacancy?
The council, just like Harrison, we live in the last time about, talking about only having one applicant for planning. And she, you know, she recommended that you guys consider extending it.
With Randy.
Yeah.
Right. And being that we've got the 30 days minimum already, we're going to be meeting sometime within that time period or-
Well, we wouldn't know if it needed to be extended until the 30-day mark.
Right. And you guys could just say 30 days, whatever we have, that's what we go with. Or if you only have one, do you want it to be brought back to you to consider the deadline? These are the conversations we need to flesh out.
My only concern would be if there's just one, that we make it clear that we don't know who that is. So that there is no bias in the choice of, if at 30 days, there's one that applies for one vacancy, then I think we run with it as a general rule, unless the council decides they want more. But we don't know, to be fair to everybody, we don't get to see who's already applied. Oh, that's a public process, so I don't know if you can do that or not.
Well, I think technically, if somebody wanted to apply and they said, but I don't want anybody to know, once you reach the deadline, it becomes a public document. So at that time, it would be public. But leading up to that, if some, because then if they change their mind and wanted to pull it, when somebody submits something, it could just be filed away. And at the end of the deadline is when those become public documents.
Well, if someone says, I'm applying, but I don't want anybody to know, for me, that's kind of a red flag.
No, and that's not what I mean.
Well, I think this most recent case, when we had only one applicant for Planning Commission and you proposed extending, you didn't tell us who it was. And my only fear was, were you saying to us, you only have one applicant and it's somebody I know you really don't want, so you better extend it? Now, there was no, you know, there was no intimation of that at all. No, no. There was no intimation of that. And I don't, I don't think I even know who the first one was to apply this to.
I wasn't told who it was either.
No, you weren't either. And so-
He just asked me, do you want to extend it? We have one applicant. And I said, yes.
Yeah, I think, so I don't mind not knowing who the applicants are when we try to make that decision about extending because I don't want it to appear to be a political decision. If I know that the person I would like has applied and no one else has, I might be inclined to say, no, let's cut it off right now. I got my woman or I got my man on there. And I don't want to be in that position. I'd like it to appear impartial and open and transparent. So it's kind of against transparency to keep it a secret. But I think when we were choosing council members, as I recall, we knew how many applications had come in, but we didn't know the names until the end of the period. And I think that's as it should be.
So I'm going to weigh in on this because it's been, you know, it's a topic that apparently I'm going to address over and over. When I first applied or pulled down the application for the city council seat, it was a very extensive application. It asked a lot of questions that, quite frankly, I thought, wow. We're actually looking at, I mean, there was political leanings could be brought out of that application. I was pretty surprised by it. When I actually applied for the position, it was basically name, rank, and serial number. And I thought that was interesting. I don't know what prompted the change from the time that the city council position, appointment, application process was started and that initial application was out online and the application that I basically filled out, which was my name. But it's, again, it's telling me that we're still struggling with this. I like the idea of having a fairly blind application process because I think to Counselor Milch's point, it gives us the ability to be able to actually focus on folks, not just their experience, but maybe their commitment levels as well, and we're not attaching names to it. I think it has to be, where the city is right now, I think it has to be a very fair process. Because we can end up kind of wrapping ourselves around the axle constantly in this process. And we want folks who have, who are coming from everywhere. You know, we want different experiential levels. And so we're struggling with this continuing. And I appreciate C Administrator Betts and her struggle with pulling some of this together. But I think the process should be fairly blind initially, at least up to the deadline point. And then we can start to disclose after that point. Because then we're just taking folks in.
So, and I missed this, though. Up to the deadline, it's blind. If there's only one, do I come back to council and ask for an extension?
Well, I think then you can extend because you don't know who to-
Or do we do an automatic extension if there's only one?
I think we need to do an automatic extension. I really do. I think another 30 days.
We have two people from the audience.
Yep.
I agree with that, but you need to also write in there. If there's two positions and I tell them, two people have applied.
It still gets extended.
Yeah, you can't just say the one.
Yeah.
If they were more than one, just think of the exception. At least one additional applicant, probably one more. But if they can see one before application.
My hopes is that we're going to have a lot of people apply in the future.
So is that true, though? Do you want more applicants than positions are available?
I think we do.
I think that term right there, one application above and beyond the open vacancies is a threshold that we could use.
What would be the reason for that? If you had two applicants?
Well, that's a good question.
Well, that's why we're trying to think through this. If you have, if you have two open positions and two applicants. Because my next question is going to be, what triggers an interview process? For which committees? Are we just going to do it for council and Planning Commission? And that's another question we need to have.
My concern with all of this is, we have all of these wonderful boards and committees, but the one that percolates to the top, for me, is more important, is the Planning Commission. Because it is critical that we have qualified people that are on the Planning Commission. Not only does it protect the city, but the applicants deserve to be heard in front of a group of people that have a clue what they're talking about. And that's lacking. And I can tell you from experience, I've been on it for 14 years, that you need to have people that have an idea of what planning means and they do their due diligence. We don't have construction strength on there. We don't have anybody other than Les Poole that's done any kind of planning at all. So how can you get people to have trust in the process if people are making decisions that really aren't qualified?
My comment to that is that oftentimes, after doing all the research and the due diligence, I do rely upon a representative of the county-
Yeah.
Who, who is not necessarily pleased and-
Correct.
Then also David, our senior attorney. But mostly, it's finding out that information myself. And I understand what you're saying.
Right. This last one could have been a huge deal.
Exactly. Because I said, I don't feel comfortable unless we have a study. And I was told by Jay that I didn't have the authority to do that.
Right. And that, which is unfortunate because you did have the authority.
I did?
You needed-
Okay, we're veering off.
Yeah, anyway, sorry about that.
I would say that, I'm sorry. I mean, I think that in that case, in particular, reading through that document a number of different times, I felt really pretty confident in the Planning Commission. I want to give them some credit there. I want to give them some credit there. I thought it was really good. What, to Ms. Smith's point, they're being guided in the wrong direction.
Okay, I'm guiding you back.
Right, and you're guiding us back.
Process check, Cammy.
It sounds to me like this is the most important commission. So if the planning commission is the most important commission, then we probably need to set a different kind of guideline for that particular advisory appointment process. And if that's the case, it may not even fall into this purview right here, this document.
So right now, we're gonna do a thirty day noticing to the newspaper, website, social media, post office, library, senior center, and local paper. I already said that. If there is, where I'm not clear, though, is there an extension if you, do you want more applicants than positions are open? Is that warrant an extension?
Well, what happens if we don't get any?
And you're on it.
We extend, you know, we extend another thirty days. Now you're, you know, two months out, and, you know, when do we just take what we've got?
I have one more question. At the end of the year, I'm on the parks board. At the end of the year, you know, many boards, you could possibly have three vacancies. And if you only got three applicants and decided to hold that over, now you're holding up that entire board from getting started in January. So I'd like to see an exempt from that in December. That even if there were three spots and you got two applications, at least let our boards move forward.
Well, along with that, is you only need a quorum to vote. So if we only had five counselors, we could, you could still make a decision. You don't have to have seven.
Except, you guys are different than us. Because we, you know, we sit around and we talk, no, I don't mean to say it like that, but we talk about things and we make decisions. And then somebody would say, well, you know, we don't have the consensus of how many people. So, kind of like waiting for the math to finish for seven weeks. By wait.
So I think maybe, and I have to agree, if we get one applicant for one position, sometimes maybe, and maybe it's just, I don't know if you can just put it case by case, to where if after the thirty days, you only get one, and there's gonna be times here in another couple of years when you don't get any, then you just open it up again. But if you just have one, and you can bring it to city council, say, we have one, do you want to extend or not, and leave it?
Which is what we did tonight.
Yes.
Okay, so do that.
I mean, that's an option. Other than, and I can see Mindy's argument of it can, oh, that's a good tune. It can drag out, you know, another thirty days. And then what happens if nobody else applies? Then you just, then you cut it off. But, so, I'm rambling. I think maybe an option is, at the thirty days, if you only have one applicant for one position, you bring it to us and say, I have one applicant for one position, do you want to extend or not? And not to, not to say that Bill's counselor position was less than planning, but I would have been happy at one person that had applied and just bring him on and not extend.
And if you have, if you have three open positions and two apply, I get what, I think that you should appoint those two, but you could still extend it and take more applications. So I feel like there's still some administrative decisions that need to be made. But it gets us to the debacle that we were in earlier this evening about how do you know when to extend when you have one applicant versus two? And also, I need more clarity now with the audit committee. My recommendation would be to just hold that application and hold the budget and audit open for another thirty days, and then bring those applicants back to you guys for consideration. And do a blind process where they're just going in the city recorder's office in the drawer. And once there's a deadline, if somebody requested a public document, that would be disclosed at that time. And that's not because of red flags, it's because of if somebody does change their mind, and they could pull it at that time. So I'm feeling comfortable about that. The city council appointment process and the planning commission appointment process, we've had two processes now that's caused issues. So this is where you either go back to what your current rules say, and you just bring the applications to council, and you guys make those decisions. Or do you want to do it on a case by case basis? Or do you want to just say with planning and council, we want to do interviews?
The language you have in here right now is that the council may interview all applicants. And perhaps we should broaden that to, the council may recommend an interview process. But then you're talking about inventing it every time, I guess. So I don't know. If you're striving for consistency and clarity, you want to go kind of one way or the other. I don't know that we always want to be the ones doing interviews for every single commission.
No. So how about on page four point six, under section C, where it says, in order to become more familiar with the applicant's qualifications, the city council may convene an ad hoc committee to hold a interview process?
And then that gives us time to come up with.
Right. And because right now, it says the council may interview all applicants for vacancy. We could leave that language there, or we could just put, create an ad hoc to, an ad hoc committee to hold interviews.
I think it's important for city council and planning commission to have an advisory board or an ad hoc committee. Because those two committees make binding decisions, quasi judicial, legislative, whatever. Those make binding decisions. Everybody else is advisory. And it's important that those appointments do not seem self-serving. And I think that's the problem that we've had in the past. So I like having that extra step, that buffer. We just need to refine it a little bit more so that it's fair, open, transparent.
So in this policy, it would really be only the planning commission that would be referenced here. Because now the city council is not a board or commission.
Right, so this would be planning commission. And Randy, how do you feel about that?
I think that's great. I would, you know, I like the process that we had. I thought it was a great process of a mix of people making recommendations from city council on that type of appointment, especially if you're looking for specific skills.
Thank you. Natalie?
In regards to, I know that Jackie's gonna check on the Oregon State statute regarding, I think that's one of them, that was for the library board, was doing interviews.
That it was required by state?
Yeah, I think it was one of them. But again, I never looked it up. That's just what Margaret and some other people said.
And I apologize to those planning commission people that are in here. I didn't mean that you guys aren't good people and aren't doing your job. Sorry about that.
Quite honestly, audit and budget could trigger interviews, in my opinion, too, when you have people reviewing financial information of the city. You want qualified period people as well, so I, but...
Because there is work, there is homework involved.
Yep.
And learning what you're doing.
That's true.
Fine, as long as you also recognize that this is in a, this is a very big time commitment for staff that you're adding as well, to do interviews in this process for all committees throughout the year. That is something that would fall in the city administrator's office. Just a disclaimer there.
Well, instead of doing it the way that we did the last two times, would it be real time consuming for admin if we did it the library board process, where the board actually does the interviewing? So, you know, traffic safety would be interviewing, planning would interview, parks would, you know?
Well, staff would still be involved with that, so don't, I just wanted to make sure you knew that. We want to do it correctly. But I, I think the conversation was that we didn't, that was not one of the roles of the people on the committee to do interviews for the replacements, that that's really the city council's purview. If you wanted to create a committee to do that, you could probably pull from that, that group. But I think, I remember that, that's why that did not happen.
Well, they wouldn't be interviewing the replacements, because the, you know, those that are gone would be gone. So it'd be the people that are currently on the, on the boards that would be interviewing for, you know, new people to come on to join them. Like what the, like, I say, like what the library does now. Right, new, right, new applicants would be...
We wouldn't need to interview you.
Unless there was somebody else that was applying for that said position, right?
Then they would be interviewed.
And you as well?
Well...
I think we're dragging the interviews out a little bit too much for some of them. And not to belabor traffic safety, I don't know that we need to spend... No, no, I don't, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time doing interviews for those. I think the planning commission would probably be appropriate. I think the others by just a pretty, and the, like Counselor Tracy was saying, is there, the application is pretty elaborate as far as the two pages that you have to fill out.
I think they'll change that a little bit.
Or maybe the boards, the individual boards can make recommendations to the council.
Yeah, we get rid of, right.
To interview. So they can look at the applicants, say, you know, we feel these are the most qualified people.
That's creating another layer.
Yeah, that's...
But wouldn't it, if we were to follow Counselor Reisner's suggestion, wouldn't that eliminate the selection committees that we're talking about? So it would come down to the boards, or to the commissions, or to the committees, correct? And then we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be scrambling then to fill those selection committees, right?
Well, if you, let's just say, for an example, you said, we want to do interviews for planning commission vacancies, okay? You could also say, we want it to be two counselors, two members of planning commission, two citizens. And then that's, that's a standard. But then you're having to figure out who's gonna be the citizens on those committees. So you could say, maybe you only have four people doing the interviews.
I guess my question, and maybe I misunderstood what Counselor Reisner was saying, what is driving that particular selection process committee standing? So you, two citizens, two counselors, et cetera, et cetera, that's in the charter, then?
No.
No, that's from the mayor.
So, so that's what I'm saying, going back to like the planning commission interviewing its own candidates. And then that information comes back in as either a recommendation or a conversation that we have at the council level so that the council can make a decision. But the planning commission has already vetted the applicants and have interviewed them and know, I'm guessing that the planning commission was, you know, will be capable of knowing qualifications to fit into that commission.
And what they're missing.
And also, correct. And what it does do, though, is it eliminates part of the politicizing of these positions because it is really coming down to the commission and how they're gonna be able to work with those applicants and those candidates. Was that close, Counselor, to what you were talking about?
Yeah. Library board does.
So, so that, to me, seems like it would be a better streamlined process if we don't have to construct these selection committees each time. And it gives the folks that actually have, that are working on these topics and policies that are in their wheelhouse to be able to qual, with qualification, be able to vet these incoming applicants. I just, I'm just trying to rip on your thing.
Yeah, no, you're spot on.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you're gonna have planning commission review applications and do interviews, do you only want a quorum of the planning commission in organizing to, how many would constitute enough for interview panel when we're setting up those interviews?
Well, so, at their next meeting...
At their meeting, you just add it to the agenda and do interviews?
Yep, that's what, that's what the library board does.
Randy?
One thing to consider is, one of the recommendations of the new way to do things is this planning commissioner can serve two terms.
That's it.
If you're going to have a couple of people that are going to be leaving that commission, who, are they gonna be included in this process or not?
Well, since you brought it up, I disagree with that provision and this recommendation. There's too much history that goes on.
Let's say, hold that thought.
Well, I've been wanting to ask, when can we ask questions?
I need to flush this out.
Okay.
Is it the consensus that vacancies on committees will be interviewed at the next committee meeting by the board? And a recommendation then would be made to council? Is that what we're saying?
Let's try that.
And are we saying for all committees?
Let's try that.
I would say, based on what Mayor Stempel said earlier, that I think the planning commission does need to be in a separate category for itself. I would like interviews of candidates for planning commissions to be done by the council as a whole. If we can work them in somehow, or a subcommittee of the council.
I'd like planning commission members to be a part of that.
And some members...
A couple of them, at least.
Okay. Because I think, again, what we found at this last interview process was, not only do planning commission members need to be, you know, have certain qualifications and knowledge, but as it turned out, the people interviewing them needed to possess certain knowledge that not all of them, I think, readily had available to them when they were, particularly when they were handed things kind of right before the process. And so you want people that understand the difference and the roles and the scope of the work to do an effective interview.
That's true. That's true. And I think as we work through this, we'll, you know, we'll have a couple of bumps we're gonna hit. But I think as we get more practice, experience, it'll smooth out to where it shouldn't be a problem probably by this time next year.
Hopefully sooner than that.
Okay, well, I'm just being...
So I'm writing vacancy on committees will be interviewed by the advisory group or board at a regular meeting, and a recommendation will be made to council? Is that for all committees or planning commission? I only had Michael, or Counselor Milch, that wanted to do something different.
I think planning needs to be separate. That needs to be a different...
I disagree.
Really? You don't, yeah.
So, um...
No matter what, they need to be involved.
Vacancy on committees, except planning commission, how many agree on that process?
Say that again.
The vacancy on committees will be interviewed by the advisory group or board at a regular meeting, except for planning commission. Do you want that, all committees to have the same interview process?
I do.
So raise your hand if you say yes.
Including planning?
Yes.
I thought it was excluding planning.
No, all committees have the same interview process.
I still think planning needs to be different.
Do you want planning separate?
Yes.
I have two.
Okay, what else?
So maybe an option is to, I think we need to flesh a lot of this out, this particular part out a little bit more. Can we meet again in a couple of weeks to sit down? And now that we have a pretty good idea, and at least...
The subcommittee?
Yes.
Yeah, because it goes deeper. Then it gets into, do you want them televised, recorded? Are they closed sessions? Are they, I mean, there's a lot that goes into this.
Yeah, I think we got a good, a good start on, at least going back, revising this particular part. We'll talk with, see if there's other issues that the counselors have and committee members. And maybe take another stab at this one part in particular, and if other things pop up later tonight.
So this, this will be an addition that we're gonna put in there on a process of how committee vacancies will be filled. We'll check on ORS for the library board requirements. Any other high level direction?
So, no, 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 please. Quick question. So I agree with Counselor McMahon, but the question is, can we settle on the other committees? It sounds to me like the planning commission is the exception to the rule.
From my point of view, as, you know, senior center manager, I think a process for that board is not necessarily, I mean, appropriate.
And the downside with the senior center is that it will take, so then we're waiting a half year because we have meetings every three months. So we put an announcement out, then it goes two months later to the committee. They then, so potentially...
They could only just do appointments once a year, and if it becomes vacant, you don't fill it, so then...
You do appointments once a year, and if it becomes vacant, you don't fill it till the, the next year, so...
Well, if the quorum becomes the new whatever it's there.
Well, the subcommittee will flush out some more and bring back a recommendation to all of you. Um...
But, but can I ask a question? Colin, do you think that the senior centre advisory committee board should continue to have some age-level qualification requirements? You're, you're willing to eliminate those altogether, okay. Um, one suggestion I had, um, I saw an article in the Willamette Week a couple of weeks ago about the number of drownings in the rivers in Portland and, and, uh, you know, in, uh, the Willamette River and the Columbia River, and thirty-six a year, more than the number of people who are hurt in car crashes in, uh, the city of Portland, uh, in a year. Uh, it occurs to me, we have a traffic safety commission. Perhaps what the city really needs is a public safety commission that would broaden its scope. Uh, the, the, the resolution describing the duties of the traffic safety commission is the only one that says, "Because we have these little machines set up that tell how people, how fast people are going on Arlington, we don't need to meet very often." And I would rather say, you know, because we have a river, it's very dangerous close to us, because we have a volunteer fire department, and we had some, council had individual briefings today regarding the, the scope of the coverage of the fire department. Um, I, I think, I think we need some citizen involvement in overseeing, uh, on a much broader level, what we do in terms of public safety in this city. Um, I don't know how the councillors feel about that.
Well, I was on traffic safety, and so was Neil, and I kind of disagree with what you're saying because they're, we've got an excellent group of people on that traffic safety. And they are, and they are...
Oh, no, no. Oh, riding the scope.
But they are, they are trying...
Keep the people, I'm just, I'm saying...
No, they're trying to do that. They, they are bringing things out and, and having discussions, so it's not just limited.
No, no.
And Yvonne is, Yvonne, you want to speak to it because you're the co-chair?
Yeah. Okay, well, we need to focus on...
Well, that's good, and I admit to ignorance of what it, no, no, I knew that, but you do her more than that. But, uh, but, uh, I just thought, I, I didn't know if we had a commit- a committee in the, in the city that really kind of relates directly to the fire department and their role in rescue work and responding to, uh, fires.
Michael, there has been history on that proposal before that I think that you chiefs can talk to you about why it didn't come to fruition?
Well, all right.
Uh, I disagree with that. The reason is because of the prior city administrator caboshed it.
And the chiefs as well. They were adamantly against it.
But our citizens wanted to do it.
Same as the chiefs we have now or different chiefs?
Different chiefs.
I'm well aware of that, and I could tell you that, uh, the fire chief would not, I won't put words in his mouth. I would be surprised if he wanted to have a committee of civilians, uh...
Who works for who?
It's, it's a different...
Once again, I would just, I would say that that's not a good way to go. We do, we hire, we hire the fire chief, and that's how that should, should be done.
Well, we also hire...
All right, guys.
Over here, too.
So once again, I'm going to ask the question about whether or not the planning commission's going to be segregated from the rest of these other commissions with regards to how we're going to deal with the applicants and, um, bringing new people onto the commission.
Well, I, I don't have an answer for you.
Well, I'm not asking for, I, I guess, is that the intent is to go on and...
I mean, we're hearing that that's not going to work for the senior centre either. It, it doesn't make sense to have their committee interview when they only meet two, three times a year. So we're going to bring this part back?
I think, I think that would make the most sense is to, you've got a pretty good sense of at least, um, fleshing out some more stuff and then come back to finalize?
Yes, yes. Give a little bit more time on that one.
Because there'll be more questions.
I also want you to understand that our committee has chosen not to get legal involved, um, up until this point, but we're getting to a point now where they are going to have to assist and research all the ordinances and resolutions that we have to go back and uncoil. So that might take a period of time. We wanted to make sure that, that you all were on board with where we are going with this, and it sounds like we are, and so at this point, I will talk to the city attorney about what the desires is. And the subcommittee will meet again to flush this out, and then we will bring it back again for you and the committee members... Okay. ...to talk about. Okay.
What about the other concerns?
The only one I had was the, um, success, two successive terms.
More than that.
I thought that was concerning, um, because there's so much institutional knowledge that will be lost. Oh, I'm sorry. F.
Four, seven, right?
Two-point-one-oh-point-oh-three-oh, appointments, F, reappointment to a board commissioner committee. I mean, granted, I think, you know, thirty-eight years is probably not a good number for some people to be on boards and committees, but I think that there's a lot of institutional knowledge that we will be losing if we limit that. I think that, but Malachi, he gave me my, he gave me a list, too.
And I'm not sure why we...
This was from City of Milwaukee, and I think the intent is to try to have fresh perspective, um, just like you don't want the same auditor for ten, fifteen years. Um, but certainly when you're in a small community, you don't have a large pool of volunteers to choose from as well. So we'll tag this one, too, to, to go back and look at maybe... Okay. The, the ORS for the library board has spelled that out for two success, um, successive terms there. Okay.
So is the intent to, to not limit, Mayor, or is the intent to set a different limit?
Um, we could set a different limit if that's what the council chooses. I just don't think the two is enough.
Okay, so you, it was the two?
Yeah, it was the two.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think you do. I think we'll look at maybe increasing the limits here, but yet...
Well, if you look at the, maybe look at the history as to the, the turnover, you know, is there really the, that need?
I know, that's what I'm wondering.
I mean, if you look back over, you know, the last twenty-five years, um, there's been quite a few people that have come and gone on all of our boards and commissions.
Well, let's, let's look at that.
Mayor Stempel said, you know, she was on planning commission for fourteen years. That's knowledge, and you learn that, I mean, I'm sure you didn't come to...
It took a lot of years, yeah.
But you didn't come to planning commission with all that experience.
No.
So that's one I don't think you want to limit on, if you've got someone that's knowledgeable and proactive and, you know, someone that really has the information, I don't think you want to limit that, if they still wanted to serve.
Yeah. Okay.
But I'm all about bringing in new people, too, though. Maybe that's it, have a model of bringing new people in and, and not necessarily training them, but schooling them on, so they're up to speed along with the rest of the panel.
That's what, what we're going to try and do, is get, give people the tools to do it.
Excellent, I think my question was, and I, other than having construction background, I didn't have any land use.
Uh, yeah.
I was reading my code, my code book.
Yep. It's a tough one, yes.
Um, if this is going to be continued in some fashion, is this going to be a work session so that maybe people are involved in any of this time?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it as a work session.
And, uh, who's on the committee? I mean, we've got, uh, Linda and Pat and Jim and who else is on?
Us three right here.
Colin and Jackie. Yeah. Bill?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
I just wanted to, uh, first, uh, any of the, the process to be open to the public. I think that, you know, certainly there may be distractions, but it's a public position. People are discerning probably, none in the public can be able to see that. And if anybody's interviewing, they might be distracted by people always rather talking in the back. Like, most people know, it's a better, better decision because sitting with your back with people is a lot easier than sitting with...
I, I think it's a fantastic idea, but I would, I would add to that, that, that the interview questions are publicly, um, published prior to the interview so that, uh, one individual doesn't sit in the back of the room watching another individual get interviewed and then have the advantage of knowing the questions prior to their interview.
Maybe that day or whatever, they can just put them out there.
That'd be great.
So many details, because now you're like, who's creating the questions? Right. I mean, there's, it, there's so many details that go in. They need to go to a planning commission meeting and sit up here when people hate telecommunications towers and deal with that conversation. That's how they should be vetted.
We can just run simulations like that.
Yep, exactly right. That, that would be perfect. Yep, role-playing. I think I had somewhere... Yep, no, high-rise.
High-rise, there you go.
Okay, so I just, I would also like, to be clear, on page four-seven, uh, under section K, it says, "No more than one individual from a household may be appointed to serve on a specific board, commission or committee at one time." Um, nepotism, we didn't specifically address it in there, but are you comfortable with that language, which there, the subcommittee was? I know Kirk and I were on planning together, but I think we disagreed more often than we agreed.
Question that, the... On four-dash-six, on A, "But any individual or group is encouraged to submit names for consideration to the city unless specified, all members must..." So does that mean that I can, um, apply for somebody else, submit their name? Or a group can say, you know, Fred should be on X committee?
Any, or is group two...
Under A.
Any is encouraged to submit names? I don't think it's saying you can do it for somebody else, we're just saying that it's open to everybody.
It does, it...
So any individual, how about if we just say, "Any individual is encouraged to submit their name for consideration." Is that good?
Yes.
Does state law have an age requirement? Do you have to be an adult to serve on? I know we had, uh, I think we had a high school student who applied to serve on a, a charter review committee.
Yeah, that was unfortunate.
I don't remember if he did or didn't, but I know there was some opposition from a city council member.
Did not.
He served for a short period of time.
He was, yeah.
Being on a board or a commission, and you know you've got vacancies coming up, and you know individuals within the community that maybe that have not been engaged prior, is it appropriate for you on that board to try to promote people to put in applications?
I think that's the point of the, the point of this paragraph A.
That's what I was kind of wondering.
So, or I can just start filling out applications for everybody, and you won't know that you've been appointed until after the fact.
So I want to make sure it's appropriate, whether you're on the library board, a planning commission say, "Hey, you've got the qualifications."
Sure.
"You really ought to think about submitting an application."
I think one of the best things we did last year was when Mindy Garretson took a real active role in trying to encourage people to apply for the wide-level openings that we had at the end of the calendar year because we knew a lot of positions were coming open. So I think that kind of, of, of really recruitment at almost amounts to, uh, is, is good, yeah, yeah. We had a, a higher, a higher number of people apply, I'm told, than we hadn't, had in the past. So I think that was a great involvement.
Could we possibly think about asking that voting members of boards and commissions must be registered to vote in the city of Gladstone election?
Right, it's currently says they're just residents, it doesn't say they're registered voters?
But that, that could exclude, like, some of our, uh, high school students that were looking...
Heck, yes.
Yes.
I would have to get a legal interpretation. I don't know if we can require people to be registered voters to serve on a committee.
I...
I don't think you should, either.
I, I agree. So, um, I was going to ask on page four-dash-ten if you might add budget to the park and rec advisory board, uh, as a J. You've got it on a couple of the others.
What are you saying, add?
Adding, you know, looking at the parks budget. And, um... Because, like, you've got it for, like, the library.
So Pat's leaving, so we're going to volunteer him, him for a couple of other committees. So you, do you want that? Okay, Natalie, what else are we going to sign her up for?
Her capital is really where that comes in for the parks board, is the capital, not so much the maintenance stuff, like, in the budget, but, you know, we're, for example, when we did the master plan, where are we spending that capital money? What project is a priority for the parks board? So I guess that was the, that's...
Right, right. Maybe item G, could, you could amend it, "Participating in planning, development and budget processes for park and recreation programs," um, or facilities.
I don't, are you sleeping, Mr. Ike's edge? Oh, no, he's awake.
He's just, he's, uh, laying low.
So you don't need us to make a motion or anything tonight, we're just... No, I think we have direction. We will meet again and, uh, bring this back, probably at the meeting in November. Okay.
And you said you have some stuff in Malachi, and you have some others?
Oh.
I do.
You have all your concerns?
I already covered it.
No.
His was just the term limit, um, interview panel.
So, another thing, I was going to ask, something that, that was mentioned, uh, that's, uh, word usage in that work plan? I've had several people ask, "What's a work plan versus..." And I've had, and I've asked, and I say, "That's a goal." Why can't we just use goals instead of work plan?
I think a work plan is more, I mean, a goal is a ten-thousand-foot level, and your work plan is how you're going to get there.
Okay.
But we will word sniff it for you. We'll do a work plan for you.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
With goals and...
Uh, I, I made reference earlier tonight to some of the specific requirements, uh, that we have currently in our municipal code for people serving on the planning commission. Uh, I may have mangled them a little bit in trying to, to talk about their history because I know two of them are in the state statutes. Uh, one of them apparently is exclusive to us, and, uh, a former city council member has written us a note saying that it's goofy and, uh, and it was, has never been applied, and I don't know why we would not be applying our own city laws. Uh, but, um, we might want to, uh, just check on those and see which ones we're required to have, which ones we choose to have because we think it makes the process better.
Um, the parks board might take exception to page four-dash- fifteen under Traffic Safety Advisory Board H, saying, "Establishing and evaluating maintenance standards for city parks."
That is, uh, that's, that's...
That's a traffic?
That's the whole, I mean, I mean...
I think that was an oops.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So do we have everything?
There we go.
Given them direction for tonight?
I'd like to make just one consideration. In going through the different chapters of each committee, okay, I noticed there was, uh, overall, there's actually six separate subtitles. But, uh, one committee had two, one committee had four, it's all over the board. And it's a hang-up I think I've got. But my recommendation is that each subcommittee, or each committee, had the same titles, subtitles, but if there, if it doesn't apply to that one, it simply says it does not apply.
So it's consistent.
There's questions about, uh, do, for example, duties is in, uh, the last one, but it's not necessarily in all of them.
Consistent formatting.
Yeah.
Right. Anything else? Mindy?
Um, on, uh, page four-six D at the very bottom, it's not just really super clear that those seven people can't be city council members.
Oh, okay, we can't be on...
It came up against that, um, on the library board, couple of steps. The left, not the left, the first.
Yeah, council members can't be on advisory boards, which can be liaisons.
Right.
They can be among one of the seven members.
Yeah, okay.
About a non-member.
All right, folks. Are we ready, done?
Yeah.
The definitions of the, of council or agency, the work plan is a detailed accounting of how an individual or group or company is going about accomplishing a specific step, approaching a project, or teaching a new business.
The details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, are we ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, so the meeting's adjourned at eight forty-seven PM.